I'll call the October 1st, 2025, meeting of the Lexington City Planning Commission to order. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Patrick McHare.
Present.
John Trazano.
Present.
Jeff White.
Present.
Melissa Reed.
Present.
Melissa Boggs.
Present.
Jordan Miller.
Ken Kuzinski.
Present.
Adam Johnson.
I'd like to acknowledge Ken's joining us. He's been sworn, duly sworn in by Kirk Lusk, Clerk Luskin. So thank you for agreeing to serve and welcome.
Thank you, Patrick.
So you have the agenda before you. Are there any additions this evening to the agenda? Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comments and communication to the Planning Commission of a general nature. There are two public hearings this evening that we will be conducting. One is regarding 751 Maritime Drive, and the other is the six-month changes to the UDO. Those two public hearings will be taken after we continue down the agenda and so forth. So if at this time, if the public has any general comments that they would like to share with the Planning Commission, please come up to the podium, adjust the microphone, speak directly into it, and start by stating your name and address. Anyone wishing to make public comments? No one stepping forward, so I will close public comments, and we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of September 3rd, 2025. You have those in your packet? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Trazano, seconded by Commissioner Boggs, to approve the September 3rd, 2025 minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, so we'll now open the public hearing. The first public hearing is on 751 Maritime Drive. It's requesting revisions to the site plan. And if there's anyone here this evening that would like to speak on that topic, again, please go to lectern, adjust the microphone, start by stating your name and address. Going, going. A closed public hearing on 751 Maritime Drive, and ask Commissioner Reed to do the report of the Site Plan Review Committee that met and discussed this.
Yes. The Site Plan Review Committee met on September 9th, and it was the first meeting with the new format that special land use actually chairs the Site Plan Review Committee, something I learned at the beginning of the meeting. Took me a little bit by surprise. The primary, it was an amendment to the site plan for, that's 106 Laura LLC, you guys are familiar with it maybe from that, instead of Maritime Drive. They wanted to amend the number of parking spaces, increasing them actually, including garages and carports, and adding some additional lighting as per the norm for Site Plan Review Committee. We went around to the, you know, fire chief, public safety, tree advisory board, staff, pardon me, and so on, and asked a few questions. There were some concerns about the trees themselves, and we had some questions about why they were adding more parking, and we had a discussion about the possibility of permanent covered bike parking or anything to offset that. They don't need these additional parking spaces for, per the city's requirements. They're, they are choosing to do it. Ultimately, we approved that amendment to their site plan with the following conditions: that the light pole plan overlaid the landscaping plan to make sure there was no interference when the trees were mature, to double-check the height of the shrubs around the building, and there were some concerns about some of the trees that were a little messy or kind of an unusual choice, and they asked, they were asked to replace the oak trees with shrubs. And they did that, the motion carried.
Would you like to make a motion?
So, given that, I move that the Planning Commission approve the amendment to the site plan for 751 Maritime Drive with the conditions as I just detailed them.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Boggs. Is there any discussion?
Maybe a clarification. So you're asking me, Mr. No minimum parking requirements, to actually vote for something that increases parking?
I struggled with it too. The, the, just for the audience in general, we tend to, we're trying to make sure that we always have enough parking, but not too much parking, not a sea of concrete surrounding every development or every group of buildings or, or whatever it was in the UDO provides for reduction of parking in some circumstances. This was the developer's choice to add these. They felt that, given the size of some of the units and guests and so on and so forth, that they wanted more parking. So I would have seen, I would have been happy to see more green space, but they do have a nice landscaping plan and stuff like that, yeah.
I think it was a very intelligent decision to add the parking spaces. You do have many families that have more than one car. You do have guests in a beautiful resort area like this, and I wouldn't imagine that they might have a boat or two parked there and some vacation vehicles. So I commend them for adding the spots.
Yeah, there aren't a lot of other places to put a, you know, gas park in or something like that, in the, in the immediate vicinity either. So it did, it killed me a little bit to add more concrete, but, but, you know, that's what they're choosing to do.
If I could add one thing, they have supplied the documents and the documentation that support those conditions. So the lighting overlay over the landscaping area, they supplied that. The fire department and the police department has looked over that and approved it. The tree advisory board has looked over their explanations of the shrubs and whatnot, and has approved that as well. So they have met all the conditions that were set forth from the Site Plan Review Committee.
Great.
And I believe those additional documents were included in the packet. Commissioner Reed, you noted that this was the first formal site plan review of, after we restructured the special land use and site plan review committee. And so this is actually, I think this is the first one that I can remember in the five or six years where we're actually taking a vote on acknowledging it and accepting it and so forth, which I think from a procedural perspective, as we talked last year when we were redoing the UDO, is a good step to get it further documented.
I agree with you. I got a little pushback after the meeting about that, about it, and, but I think this is, we've just uncovered in the five or six years that I've been on Planning Commission, we've uncovered too many times where there's a gap between what Site Plan Review Committee did and the records supporting it and the approval of it, and, you know, ultimately, Planning Commission is responsible for this, so I agree with you.
And the other thing is, we always, we, we are, not always, but sometimes we're challenged in terms of working with the developer, and in the minutes, it was noted, the fact that the developer was trying to actually comply with the UDO.
Yes.
While they were actually only held to the standard of what was in place at the point in time the project was approved. And so, I mean, I think that's a really great indication in terms of the collaborative nature that this developer has been taking in terms of working through the city. So I just, kudos to them for being proactive in that manner.
If I may comment on that, Chairman, I have found this process with this developer and construction company to be extraordinary. And it's really a model of what happens when a developer and a construction company works with the city step by step in the process. I was part of the original site plan review, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, but Chief Henderson, the fire chief, asked for some changes in the roadways for his trucks, so they could get in there and make a turn, including getting a ladder truck in there. He asked that the stairwells be widened and the doorways be widened, so they could actually carry people out, which they accommodated. They accommodated LMT parking. And in conversations I've had with Sean, they've kept him apprised, you know, every step of the way, and the way that they've handled this special land use, as you mentioned, has just been extraordinary. And that's what happens when you have a developer and a construction company working with the city every step of the way. It becomes a very pleasant process, and it becomes a smooth process, especially when they want to change something. So my congratulations and thanks to you folks for doing that.
I would also add that the original site plan and buildings did not have elevators, and there are three-story buildings, and we brought up concerns about that at the site, at the original site plan, and so did Chief Henderson as well, and they have since added elevators.
Wow.
Any other comments? So we have a motion from Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Boggs, to approve the requested revisions to the site plan for 751 Maritime Drive. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to the next public hearing, which is for the six-month UDO text changes. And again, if anybody would like to speak during the public hearing, they are more than welcome to approach the lectern and adjust the microphone and speak directly into it, starting by stating your name and address. Does anyone wish to address this topic during the public hearing? No one is stepping forward. I will close the public hearing on the six-month UDO text changes, and ask Commissioner Trazano to give a report of the text and zoning committee.
I have a procedural question.
Sure.
Should I give the report or make the motion?
Give the report. Give the report first.
Okay. We've discussed most of the changes that were in your packet, in terms of a number of things that we changed. A couple of things that we had not discussed that are changes. You'll notice on the land use tables in the, in the document that Karen sent, which incorporates all these changes on page, it starts on page 24, 24, 25, and 26. One of the things we did to the land use tables is we added the section for the lakefront overlay and the industrial overlay. Prior to this, the industrial overlay had its own land use section, and there was not one for the lakefront overlay, so that has now been added. I will make a note that one of the things that happens when we work with the consultant on this, and they try to compress things on the table, that sometimes those things get missed. And on the land use under the lakefront overlay, on page 24, you'll see that the top line just says dwelling use, dwelling units, use and, use table of residential density, and has Ps all the way across, including the lakefront overlay. And then underneath one dwelling unit, there's a blank space. There should be a P in there, because that's, that's what's permitted there. So that will be changed. I want to notice that change, and that will be the change that we send up. The other thing is, we've added the language on verge parking, and Karen provided a copy, just so you would have all that language in front of you. I do want to make note that the Public Safety, Public Utilities Committee, at its last meeting, reported out the police power language for, that would allow verge parking at their last meeting, so that will go to City Council.
On the 13th.
On the 13th. I do just want to make a couple of comments about the verge parking. I think that the verge parking expands parking options. It gives residents a safe, legal way to add parking, especially where driveways and on-street spots are limited. There's no cost to the city. Property owners fund construction and maintain the spaces, saving city resources while providing a public benefit. It's all about safety. You have to have a hard surface, drainage, curb grade requirements, so that'll help prevent blocked sidewalks, protect pedestrians, and ensure the proper water flow. It protects the infant, infrastructure and trees. DPW reviews, there's a DPW review, and they also prevent replacement to keep neighborhoods attractive. You got clear rules and oversight, and your permit inspection and an appeal process, ensuring consistency and accountability, preventing ad hoc or unsafe verge parking. And city retains the right to choose or reclaim verge spaces for utility work or emergencies. In short, I think it's a balance of pros in terms of providing this requirement.
Commissioner Trazano, during the UDO, the text and, or the zoning committee discussed verge parking at length. And I just think it's important that people understand that we specifically, and I was going through the UDO slides, updating them for a presentation in terms of Developer Day, and in it was a slide that said very specifically to the City Council that verge parking was something, along with the alternative parking, that the Planning Commission was not empowered to address because of the police power aspect. And we turfed those two to the City Council. And so Commissioner Balger, on behalf of Public Safety, drafted all of this language, because the City Council's interested in, correct?
Right.
Moving this forward, but they can't move it, they can't address doing it without us talking about the portion that relates specifically to zoning. Ultimately, this would have to be approved by them, because it's the police power.
Correct.
Yeah, which is why I'm very surprised that this is being thrown in with the UDO revisions we've made. I look at this as a separate issue that we would eventually add to UDO, and that was my understanding in our text committee, not that this would be lumped in with our UDO, because as I expressed, and it did get voted for, I do want to say that, I thought this would come up later in your meeting about our text committee, not, not part of this UDO portion, with all those changes, all those months we've been working on, the changes on UDO, and then slide this in with it. I think this is a separate issue at this point. Verge parking. The city is moving forward with verge parking. No, they're not. They have not approved it. City Council has not approved verge parking. I was in the meeting, the planning session meeting about parking. Verge parking got shot down right away in that meeting. And you said tabled, I'm saying shot down. People, we haven't had verge parking in, in this city for a long time. We are appointed people. City Council, if City Council says to us, we want you to put verge parking in, then it's our obligation to review and put in the proper ordinances for it. We do not have that guidance from them.
We don't need to have the guidance from them.
Or we just act upon ourselves as planning commissioners, appointed planning commissioners?
But, let's back up. When you said it was tabled, I don't rec, I don't recall, Commissioner White, us actually taught, it was on the slides, but we never did any language, because as we were meeting with, as zoning was meeting with the consultants and so forth, we realized that verge parking was outside, because of the police powers, outside the, the complete control of the Planning Commission. And so we never suggested, the zoning committee never brought forward language on verge parking previously.
This doesn't allow verge parking. This, this is nothing other than the design standards to do it.
I understand that. This is why I thought it'd be a separate issue, where we would vote on this, not include it with the UDO at this point, because we don't know if it's something that the City Council would like, that our seat would like. And that's my concern. I, I was prepared, and I still am prepared, to discuss my concerns about verge parking. So by throwing this in here, I'm uncomfortable for voting for the UDO that I've worked on months with you guys collectively, have great meetings, and we've done a fantastic job of trying to touch everything up. But when you include verge, throwing this in like it's a bill, I'm just going to add something else in here, I think this is an incorrect way to do it, versus us going, it'd be just like if the text committee that I know of, when we make changes to text, when we add something, it gets approved by the Planning Commission, correct? That's the procedure. And in this case, what we are approving is UDO, and this is being slid in with the UDO. And I think this should be a separate matter.
So procedurally, I will say, so this Public Safety Committee met of the City Council, and they had this language and Jack's language for the police power ordinance. They voted to move that to City Council. So City Council will be voting on that on October 13th.
And let them vote on it.
So, just a second. So if the Planning Commission can either, the reason we had this drafted was so that you could have that discussion about it. You can make a motion to remove it, you could make a motion to move forward with voting the way it is, but we put it in there so that you were prepared for sending it forward, because the impression I had coming out of that meeting was that the discussion was taking place here today. But if you choose not to have this language in there, you can make a motion to approve the UDO without it going forward without this, with omitting this section. That's not a problem at all. But if you don't have it in there today, and it goes to City Council, this will come back to you again, and we will start the process all over again with approving changes. And if you take it out, that's fine too. And if it goes to City Council, we'll come back again, and then we'll do the ordinance change again, we'll do two City Council meetings again, and we'll do a 20-day comment period again. So it is in there for your discussion purposes only. You can choose to say, I want to make a motion to move forward with the UDO and omit this section, or you can make a motion to move forward with all of it in there pending whatever results of your discussion.
So if we don't include it tonight, and it goes to City Council, is City Council then only approving the police power ordinance, which they wouldn't approve unless they had the design standard?
City Council can override you on anything they want to override you on.
I understand. That was going to be my question.
They can put this in.
So my position is, is a little different. My recommendation would be that we vote on the UDO, and during the text zoning committee reports, we then discuss verge parking, because it, it is a separate, in my viewpoint, a separate issue that was recently added here in our committee meetings. So then if it is voted forward, it still goes forward, but I want some further conversation about it.
Well, why don't we have that discussion now?
Because you're, you could be potentially weighing verge parking with our UDO approval.
So you're saying if we could just approve the UDO without the verge parking, have that set aside, and then approve or not approve the verge parking to go with it?
Exactly.
Well, take them as two separate topics. So it's not to go with it, but it's, it's two separate, they're both, they...
So we need to discuss them separately?
We can, we certainly can, if that's the sense of the overall Planning Commission, if that's what you would like to do. Either way, the intent was to discuss it tonight.
Can I just, can I just clarify that? So I, I'm sure I know what we're talking about. The, the, the question before us is, is, we don't have a motion before us, but right now, we're deciding whether or not we're going to vote for the changes to the UDO. with the verge parking change, or if we're going to vote for the changes to the UDO without the verge parking change. That's the, that, those are the two potential motions that we could have in front of us. And if we do decide to do it without the verge parking change at this time, we would discuss that five minutes later?
Yes. That's what's being suggested. I have.
I mean, I don't, I guess I.
I think it's just one.
There's no reason we can't make that, I mean, just finish. If there's, if, if there's, if there's no reason that we can't do that to make you more comfortable, Commissioner White, then, I mean, who cares?
Okay.
So I have no problem.
That seems like a small thing to.
Let me ask Commissioner White. I have no problem making a motion right now separately on the verge parking, to add it to the UDO and have that discussion before we take the full vote. And it either get voted up or down.
Oh, you're saying do the verge parking ahead of the UDO vote? And then if we approve it, it goes with the UDO?
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
So let me ask a different question. What came out of, what came out of the text zoning committee to recommend to the, to the Planning Commission?
It was a two to one in favor for verge parking with dissenting.
To be, and this language, which you reviewed and discussed there, right? So the planning, so what is actually presented this evening, in terms of your earlier comment about it being slid in, I just want to clarify, it was presented to the Texan zoning committee, of which the three members are here this evening, and that was voted to bring it forward as part of the UDO. Is that?
Well, I was misunderstand, misunderstood that. That could have been the case, but I don't, I felt we talked about the UDO, and then we changed subjects to the verge parking. So it was like new language coming in because.
I'm just asking what you guys recommended.
UDO, the UDO were revisions. We're cleaning things up, we're adding some things. We didn't add a new section. Very, well, we might have one or two, I don't know, I'm not going to swear to that. I mean, the point of it is, this is a brand-new topic matter that came in, and I didn't look at it as being literally like slid into the UDO portion.
If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, this document, which was from, had on it the one, because this came from Commissioner, Councilmember Volger.
Volger.
And I think it actually had this kind of, this hasn't changed. This is what came from him.
That's.
Which likewise had the UDO Article 8, Section 807. It was quite, I mean, the documents were, that's what this is in the UDO. It's Section 807. It's, this is the language. I don't know what, since I wasn't at Texan zoning, what you actually made as a motion to move the UDO forward, and if you all thought that 807 was 807 and was intended to be included or not. But at this point, I don't know if we're going to have any further discussion on the UDO. Were there any other questions about the general UDO?
No.
No? Everybody was fine with that. So is there, we, because we normally do public hearings, and then we do the motions after. So is there a motion that somebody is going to present?
I'll make a motion that we add the verge parking, Section 807, to the UDO.
What, you, so you're doing just that, to add it to the UDO?
But we haven't approved the UDO yet.
No, he's, he's adding it first, and he's looking if there's a motion to add it before the UDO. You're adding it to the draft UDO that's before us.
Correct.
And then you would have discussion.
Yes. So is there a second?
That was me.
That was you. Thank you. Okay. So there is a motion by Commissioner Trazano, seconded by Commissioner Reed, to add the UDO to recognize that Section 807 of the verge parking that was distributed in the packet in terms of language for verge parking to the full discussion of all of the changes to verge, or all the changes to the UDO, correct?
So therefore, I'm going to make my argument as why I don't think verge parking.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
May I?
Sure.
Let me, I'd like to submit this to the record. Here's some photo, a photo to give you an idea what verge parking is. Verge parking, you know, when you hear these words, sometimes it's a little confusing what it is. I like to describe it, it is a, basically a, I got another, anybody else need a copy? It's basically a curb cut. You're taking the roadway, you're cutting into a curb, and you're going into the public area, which is your parkway. Some people call it parkway. It's the grass area between the sidewalk and the street. So everybody knows that. For whatever reason, this was allowed a number of years ago in the city of Luddington. It has since not been allowed for a long time. I don't know exactly for how long. As I mentioned, I think, you know, the City Council members that were involved with that meeting, that I was involved with parking, I mean, the verge thing just really didn't get any traction whatsoever that I could recall. My other two points I want to make about this is that the point of the, of the police, what's that organization, I'm sorry?
The police.
The police power wants to do it is because of during plowing season, what happens is people are parking on the street, they're getting ticketed, and it creates a concern for them. So therefore, they can better enforce that by creating a verge parking. So therefore, the alternatives, you can go ahead and put verge parking. So who is that going to impact? In my viewpoint, it's going to impact the lower-income neighborhoods, and it's going to impact landlords or property owners who rent to those same people because they then are going to be, in a sense, required to put in verge parking. And I also believe verge parking is not the look that we like in our city. And this is why I'm giving you the photos of what it looks like. I think verge parking, if you look at all of it, as you walk around the neighborhoods, you'll see they're not taken care of very well. And it would be very similar argument to what we have with our sidewalks, the issues that we have with our sidewalks. We're going to further create some problems for us by allowing verge parking in this area. So my whole point was originally going to be, in the, in the committee part of it is, if City Council says to us, "Hey, all right, we're going to allow verge parking," we then can add the rules later. Let that happen. But I think the City Council has not approved this for us to be going ahead and indirectly endorsing this plan. And that's what the Planning Commission, in my viewpoint, would be doing. So therefore, I don't think we should be approving verge parking at this point at all.
Well, let me ask you two questions about what you just said. First of all, you said this disproportionately, maybe you didn't use that word, affects low-income people and.
Neighborhoods.
Neighborhoods, low-income neighborhoods, and landlords who have to rent in those low-income neighborhoods. What do you think they should do? How does it impact them?
How it impacts them is because, as we stated earlier, we're, we're, the UDO changes the parking allotments. And so therefore, you don't need as many parking spaces, which then creates more parking on the street, which again is fine. And, but the point of it would be is then they can't have a place to park during winter days.
And wouldn't verge parking help that situation? And the low-income people that live there who don't have adequate parking right now?
Well, they're going to have to invest to put that lot there.
And if they're willing to do that?
Well, my argument again is aesthetically, it doesn't look good.
Well, I'm not worried about it looking good. I'm looking about, worried about the low-income families who live there.
We as planning commissioners look at what we should be looking at, the future of our city. And the aesthetic look of our, future of our city is important to us. This is why in the UDO, we're requiring sidewalks, right? That's part of that, too.
This doesn't take away sidewalks, and so.
No, it just puts a car on a sidewalk.
No, it doesn't.
Well, it could.
That's factually incorrect.
I mean.
Doesn't. It doesn't impede the sidewalk, but you're not offering a solution to the people who do not have adequate parking in the winter, who would not be able to access their car because they have no place to park, because our city was built that way. The only way to change that is to knock down a couple houses and make them one big house. But the little houses that are there that do not have adequate parking, they have one parking place. No, no family has just one car. They usually have two cars. And in the winter, you're not offering a solution to those low-income neighborhoods.
I did offer a solution.
Except that you want it to look better. What is it?
We discussed it in the committee meeting.
Can you tell me?
Yes. Number one, I said, for the few times, and the number of times, however number you want to say, that we have snowy days, allow them to snowplow or shovel and put their cars on the grass area. So then you're not dealing with this nine months of their 10 months of the year of having verge parking. Option one. Option two, you brought up solutions that maybe the DPW or others could look at for whatever reason they refused to do it. And that is to alternate the times they plow. It happens in every other city. So we do have other options. This isn't our only option.
I know, Jeff, but I've been working three years under two DPW supervisors and two city managers to get them to do alternate parking, and they will not. It is a hard no. Now, they're citing safety reasons. Pulling cars off the road makes a safer, wider road. And there is no other place for them to park. And so our city wasn't created that way. Those houses were built when a lot of people just had one car. But the people who live there now have no other place to park. And we've imposed restrictions in this verge ordinance that are quite expensive. I do not know how a lower-income family is going to afford even to put one in if it's not already there. Now, I don't want to compound that problem. If it's already there, I am hoping that my understanding is correct, that verge parking that is already there is grandfathered in. Am I correct? Correct. People are not going to be made to tear up their current verge and put in a new. Yeah, they get to keep what they have. Correct. That's correct. And. Just like they get to keep it now. Yeah. And so their resale is going to be difficult if somebody is somehow managing with one car to anyone who would look at their house and have two, which is normal. And I really don't think it looks bad. I think you've picked a picture that, you know, needs some work, definitely. But the practicality in the winter, the fairness and affordability in the neighborhoods, and the safety and traffic flow that verge parking allows, it, it is a cost-effective approach for these people that need to have verge parking. And I, you know, I think there's a small-town character about verge parking. You know, as long as it's, you know, and as we said, it doesn't have to be concrete. It can be, you know. Asphalt, pavers. Pavers, so there are less expensive options. I don't see any negative to verge parking, other than they did not keep up their cement. It's been there a long time.
Well, I have a dozen photos. I didn't want to.
There are a lot, I can give you a dozen where they don't keep up their porch, or they don't keep up their grass, or they don't keep up their house, but they can't afford to most times.
So again, we're asking these property owners to put this in. And then also, the property owners who rent these places will be further obligated to put this in.
Put in verge parking?
Because the whole point of this, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Trazano, the whole point and part of this is to allow police enforcement, so therefore they can say, "Okay, you know, we're, we're going to have to give you a ticket. You do have, now have an alternative, though, that you can put in verge parking, so we're not giving you tickets anymore." So they're going to go to property owners who have these, who are rental owners, and they're going to say to them, "Put in verge parking to help with your renters." And that's going to be a further obligation on those folks as well.
So I have.
Financial obligation.
I do want to push, I do want to push back on one point before Commissioner Trazano. I don't know why we're singling out rentals when I can drive around the city, and I, if I'm not mistaken, there's somebody sitting up here, correct?
Correct.
That has a verge parking space in existing neighborhood and so forth, and is not a renter.
I'm not signaling them out.
No, you keep using them as an example.
They're one example.
I know, but it, but that's.
They own, they own, there's people who own these houses, right, and rent to people, okay?
Which is very needed.
And those people, they're renters, they're parking on the streets, they're getting tickets.
But Heather could be parking on the street and getting a ticket as well.
I agree.
And so I'm just saying that I don't, I mean, when we're focused on this being a renter issue, this is more to me whether or not we're allowing somebody the opportunity to in fact put in a verge spot. Whether or not they're here, or quite frankly, whether they're in your neighborhood. And now they're having to expend dollars to do so. It isn't free. They're not, it's not gravel or whatever. There's restrictions and so forth. So somebody has to first say, "I need it, and this is the most appropriate place," as opposed to expanding my driveway or whatever else it would need. This is a decision that they're making from a financial perspective. I doubt that a landlord would independently decide to do this with a property unless there were some compelling reasons why they would be doing it. You know, we're not obligating the renter, we're not obligating landlords to put in verge parking.
I can, I can tell you, and I don't, I don't want to ruffle any feathers, but I do have to remind people I am a landlord. I don't see this as, it, it as a burden. I see it as an option. I would not, in any circumstances, in the 11 properties that I own in the city of Luddington, feel compelled to put in verge parking unless I had a parking problem, and that was a solution to my parking problem. So it, so speaking on behalf of my fellow landlords, I can tell you, it wouldn't be a burden. It would be an opportunity. I have two properties where I would love to do that, because I don't have good other, I don't have good other options. I have other properties that I wouldn't do that, but I certainly wouldn't feel compelled to do it. What I tell tenants now is, "This is the parking that's available. You have to solve that problem elsewise." And I can't, I can't help them. I can't do anything else for them. The, the aesthetics of it are, it are, I guess I have to say that I personally prefer a paved or, or with pavers or concrete or whatever it is, verge parking space over people parking on the grass. I'm pleased to hear the chief of police say that it, that he doesn't see it as a safety issue. And I understand his problems with enforcement. You can't, I mean, if people don't have anywhere to park, you can't ticket them because they're parking where you don't want them to park if you won't let them build the place they're allowed to park. So the aesthetics, I get it, right? Okay, maybe, maybe there are some people whose vision for the city is that it doesn't look like people live here, especially people of more modest means. I personally am unwilling to cause difficulty for my fellow residents for the sake of aesthetics. I think the people are more important than that. And it, and, and I just, I just, I don't, as a landlord, I don't feel compelled to put it anywhere. I don't already want to put it and can't.
And we have allowed in our UDO, by right, duplexes, which in those, you know, in a lot of areas.
Require special land use.
Yeah, but you need extra parking. And parking is not, in our older neighborhoods, is not sufficient. The parking that was, was built, you know, provided when those homes were built. We're just giving them an option, and a safe option. And, you know, in the winter, you don't know when a storm's going to hit in the middle of the night. And for elderly people, you know, again, anybody with any mobility issues, they need to be closer to their front door. They need those options. And I just feel like we, we have what we have. We have a great deal of neighborhoods that have inadequate parking spaces available to them. And there is no other solution. You can't, there's no other solution, Jeff. They won't do alternate snowplowing. They will not. We cannot assume that they will if for three years they have been a hard no. Two different DPW supervisors, two different city managers, hard no. So they have no other option than this.
Two points, if I may, to address some of the comments Commissioner White made. 807, 8.07.C. on the construction has specific design standards. The one I want to read to you is Section F, Maintenance. "The owner shall be responsible for the maintenance of the parking area. The owner shall ensure that the pavement is smooth, free from deterioration, not hazardous to passing vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians, and does not create negative impact on neighboring properties by reason, by reason of poor maintenance." The picture you showed and the other ones that you have examples of won't be allowed because they're required to maintain it.
So you're telling me they'll need to change it? The current, the current ones?
No, not the current ones. Future construct. Future construction, they're responsible for it.
Well...
But if these, wouldn't these guys have to? Wouldn't they have to change?
The reality of this, and this is what we pointed out at two other public meetings that we had regarding bicycles, and I can't remember the other thing, is we can, you have to be, you have to be realistic in your expectations. So we want everyone to have a nice lawn, you know, to take care of their lawn and mow their lawn, and everyone to repair their house and have it in a safe working order. That's not the reality. And we would expect that they would maintain this. But we have two police officers at a time, every day, that operate, two, to handle everything. So if you think that they have time to go over and check everyone's lawn, you know, to check everyone, you know, is doing their electric bike on time to, you know, in the right proper order, and to service traffic accidents, and speeding, and emergency calls, we're fooling ourselves. We have two officers, that's all their city can afford, is two officers on time. So I wish that we could enforce all of the things that we can enforce, and we have one building inspector that holds like three jobs. But when you have an elderly person, they cannot keep this up. If you have a person who's mobility impaired, they can't keep this up. If you have a single mom with three kids, I was a single mom with four, it is hard to keep this up. And as much as I would love it, I know it's not realistic. I know I can't have that expectation for everybody. I can in your neighborhood, I can in mine, but it's just, it's a hard thing. We have to be realistic. We can want it, and we can put it in our ordinance, but the reality of it, I mean, I'd rather just maybe get a group of people who would go around and help people with their yards who can't afford it.
Well, I think I need to qualify something. I am not trying to say rich versus poor here, okay? What I am saying is, is that this creates potentially a financial burden to somebody who can't afford, as you're pointing out, to put in Verge Parking. And they'll be potentially driven to do that, because now police enforcement has this opportunity to say, wait a minute, you've got this other option. My biggest concern is the aesthetics of it. I don't think this looks good. I don't see communities of our size has this. You guys can vote against this, this is fine, I can kind of see where it's going, but those are my two positions on it. I think it creates a financial burden for the property owner if they rent to people, because there will be requests from the renters, whether they do it or not is up to them. And then again, I think it's a financial burden to folks, it's going to be difficult to do, so they stop getting tickets. And then lastly, I think it's, it doesn't look good for our neighborhood.
So we have to offer a solution.
If you disagree, that's fine. We just vote out.
We just have to offer a solution, and there's no other solution.
Any other comments? So Commissioner Trazano made a motion to include Section 807 in the overall changes to the UDO. And it was seconded by Commissioner Reed. We've had extensive discussion, and it may be good to take a roll call on this particular one. So could we have a roll call?
All right. Ms. General Ed, I'm just sorry. Melissa Boggs.
Um, yes.
Melissa Reed.
Yes.
Josh Trazano.
Aye.
Patrick O'Carroll.
Aye.
Kevin Zinski.
Abstain.
Jeff White.
No. Four yes, one no, one abstaining, motion carries. So...
I'll now make a motion that we forward the UDO changes, that we accept and forward the UDO changes, as we discussed, to city council.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Just again, to clarify, the city council can choose to remove the Verge Parking. The city council could let the language for Verge Parking stay in the UDO, but not do anything in terms of the police powers. So it'll, it would be up to them as...
I have a question.
As Heather pointed out, they could override us either way. So anyways, yes.
Can they return it and ask for revisions? Or would they be able to make revisions themselves?
Well, they, both.
Both, okay.
Depending on how they want to handle it. Any other discussions? So there's a motion by Commissioner Trazano, seconded by Commissioner White, to advance the UDO changes that...
I do have one point, so.
Okay.
I just want to compliment Commissioner Trazano, and Commissioner Boggs, and in particular, staff members, Karen and Heather, again, you others, as the chairman has participated on putting this whole big, huge UDO together. I was in and out of that process, but then seeing in the revisions, just the slight revisions that we made, the amount of work and conversation that we have, and that Karen was able to keep everything straight, and helped us redline a lot of things through all this process. I can't, it really helped guide us, because we can go down certain rabbit holes that gets us nowhere, and you help us with that, and Heather does as well. So thank you, that's what I'd like to say.
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing, too, about this committee. And Jeff, you've been a great addition, you open our eyes in new areas. But if, I'm just going to say, if every committee could work like this committee does, we would get more things done in a serious but gracious way. We will come at every issue that comes before us with passion. We have different views, we come from different places and different opinions, and at times they've had to close the door when we are pursuing our position, and nobody is afraid to speak or push back. You know, nobody cowers, nobody just says, I give up. We push until we come to a consensus, and, you know, sometimes you just say with the majority, you know, rules, and then we laugh and joke and talk about what we're going to do next. So there is never any offense when we leave that room, and it is such a joy to work that way, to be able to have a voice, to be able to push that, and push against people that you care about and enjoy, come to a consensus, whether it's yours or not, and in a minute it's over, it's like, what are you doing this weekend? It's a beautiful thing, and I wish our government worked that way.
And just to let you all know that the, we received an award from the Michigan Association of Planning for the UDO, and that's going to be presented on October 22 in Kalamazoo at their annual dinner, so.
And the public this evening got a little taste of what Commissioner Boggs was describing as it relates to Verge Parking. Take that times 200 in terms of what took place during the entire development of the UDO. Any other questions or comments?
I have one note, if I may please, Commissioner. In the new version of the UDO, there was one little error, I'm not quite sure if it was brought up in the packet or not, I just want to clarify that, the, in waterfront, we changed the setbacks on interior waterfront lots, so that the rear setback is 10 feet. The diagrams match that, but it didn't get changed in the table.
Karen has noted that.
Yes, and so that'll be brought to city council, corrected for that.
Right. The other one that was noted...
That was not my list to mention, and I...
The other one was the one that Commissioner Trazano mentioned in his opening remarks about the P being added to, I think it was page 24. So, you know, yeah, it's part of the challenge in terms of how changes to this document are done by the consultant and so forth, and the turnaround times and so forth. So we have, again, a motion by Commissioner Trazano, seconded by Commissioner White, to advance the UDO revisions, including the Verge Parking, Section 807, to the city council. I would suggest, Karen, can you please do a roll call?
Sure can. Jeff White?
Yes.
Kevin Zinski?
Abstain.
Patrick O'Carroll?
Yes.
Josh Trazano?
Aye.
Melissa Reed?
Yes.
Melissa Boggs?
Yes.
We have five ayes, one abstaining, motion carries. So, moving into the agenda, old business. There's no old business listed. Any other updates from the Special Land Use Site Plan Review Committee?
No.
Okay. Any other updates from text and zoning?
No.
Zoning Board of Appeal?
No, I'm happy to say we didn't.
Any new business? Not hearing any, any other comments from commissioners?
I would just like to, since we're in session, welcome Ken.
Oh, thank you.
It's a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you.
And look forward to working with you.
Looking forward to working with all of you.
I will say, Ken was recruited because he came in for a special land use, so, anyone out there, it can happen to you, too.
Just, just once, we'd like to have a new commissioner where we have a smooth, easy, quick meeting, and you think to yourself, oh, this won't be so bad. Once, that's what we like to try. And we do have those, just not when we have freshmen on board, that's all.
Any staff reports? Sean?
No, sir.
Heather?
Nope.
Karen? Any, any DDA update?
Credit.
Should we, so we, you want to...
Well, I don't really know what it's called.
Karen received her Level 2 Assessor accreditation.
Yay!
Go, girl.
Any DDA update?
No, we don't meet until October.
Okay.
It's October. See how good I was on that report? No, but not, I know it's October today, but we don't meet until later this month.
All right. Is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.